Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the special meeting of the Dayton Board of Health on Wednesday, June 29, 2016. Please join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have any minutes, correct?
No minutes.
No minutes. Correspondence. We have a letter from Borges Brothers Trucking regarding waste collection services. I will ask Mr. Cronin to please read that.
We had a visit yesterday from the owner of Borges Brothers Trucking, who is our vendor for all the trash and recycling pickup and some of the pickup containers that we have at the transfer station. Mr. Borges has been doing business in this town for decades, probably one of the longest term vendors that we have had. They have always gone above and beyond what any contract we sign with them read. He's in the midst of making some changes. He's offered us a, not a one-year contract, but he made a proposal for a three-year contract because of, like I said, some of the changes that must be made. He himself took a ride around the town of Dayton last week for a couple of days. Matter of fact, he took a truck out one day just to see how this town was faring as far as recyclables and trash and what have you. And he was amazed at the growth in the homes in this town. It did lead him to believe and accept the reason why his overtime payments have been astronomical to his health. He had based all the routes of picking up trash and all our recyclables based on the amount of homes many years ago, but that's just not the case now. So what he has done is he is in the process of mapping out the entire town, sections of the town. He has not finalized it yet, but his proposal and what he intends to do, starting in FY17, which will be in July, and we'll notify everybody well ahead of time, is he will be picking up trash five days a week in the town of Dayton. And of course, the obvious question is, what happens now if there's a holiday or a snow day that he can't come out here? Well, he'll always be that one day behind. Everybody would get pushed up a day, so he will work on Saturdays. On top of that, the boot, the recyclables have gotten out of hand. He had taken a truck out last week because he had a couple of vacation, a couple of his employees that were on vacation, and he had to stop two and a half hours before the end of the day to go empty his truck because he already had seven and a half tons of recyclables on his truck. That's going to change also. No longer will he be picking up recyclables every other week, but that'll be done weekly. So whatever day your trash is going to be with the new redistricting and new arrangements of the streets, your recyclables will go out in the same day every week. Like I said, when he finalizes that whole revitalization of mapping the town, we will post it on the website, we'll have it here, and we'll describe it to all the people. I think this is a very positive, positive action and proposal on Mr. Borges's part, and we welcome him and continue to accept the outstanding job that he and his men do.
Thank you. The recyclable volume increase is really a plus, not for Mr. Borges, for the town, because that means the more you recycle, the less trash there is. And we've been promoting recycle as much as possible, so I guess the people in town are paying attention. In addition to the new routes and the collection schedule, Mr. Borges said also that, along with that information, he is going to provide information about the types of containers that you can use for recycling. I think he's talking size-wise, because obviously you can't use something the size of a 55-gallon drum because it's going to be rather difficult to lift. But I think the proposal that we've had is certainly a positive sign from Borges Brothers, and they have been an exceptional contractor for this town. They were, they had the contract when I was on five years ago and had had it prior to that, so I'm glad that they're able to modify a schedule and come up with a service that we can afford to provide, and certainly I'm happy to hear we're having weekly recycling. Next piece of correspondence is from Covanta. Covanta was formerly called CMAS, which is the incineration plant down in Rochester. And this letter to the board says, "Please see the attached worksheet calculating the escalation rate per ton for fiscal year 2017. The new disposal rate per ton for the town of Dayton at CMAS effective July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017 will be $68.69. Please let me know if you have any questions regarding this matter." While Mr. Borges was here, I had him take a look at this, and he said it falls in line with what is occurring. The rate of increase for per ton is based on the January Consumer Price Index, which is 4 percent. So they increase it by 4 percent, and that's how the rate came up of $68.69. This goes hand in hand with our waste, our trash pickup at our recycling program. We have one other piece of correspondence from the Mass Department of Public Health regarding cancer incidents in Massachusetts from 2008 to 2012. This is something that comes out periodically, and it talks about the different types of cancer in the area, and it talks about areas that, areas of communities that seem to have a higher rate of certain types of cancer than other areas in our immediate area and also in the state. It's a lengthy report, and if anyone would like to view this, take a look at it, it's here in the Board of Health office, and it's certainly public information and available to you. But some of the areas that they talk about in Dayton are bladder cancer, brain and nervous system, breast cancer, cervical cancer, colon, esophageal, Hodgkin's lymphoma, kidney and renal, pelvis area, larynx leukemia, liver, lung, bronchi, melanoma, multiple myeloma, non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, oral, ovary, pancreatic, prostate, stomach, testis, thyroid, uterine, and all of the sites not mentioned.
That's a good organ.
Actually, you can have, yes, you can have, you can have cancer, it seems like anywhere in your body. There's, doesn't seem to be any place that cancer can't develop. So anyhow, all of this information is available, and again, if you would like to review it, please get in touch with Karen and make, set a time to come in and take a look at it. It will be on file. Announcements. Would you like to read the announcements, please?
Trash bags, shops, disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. You can call 508-669-6431 for more information. There is a prescription drug drop box now located at the Dayton Police Station. It is limited to pill form prescriptions only. You may contact the Dayton Police Station at 508-669-6711 for more information. Just as a reminder, this is a special meeting that we'll be holding tonight, not only the Board of Health, but also the Board of Selectmen, and it's because we have some last-minute things to do. This will be the last Wednesday of fiscal year 2016. So the Board of Selectmen will be having a regular meeting on Wednesday, July 6, 2016. The Dayton Public Library has museum passes available for residents with a library card. They are available on a first-come, first-served basis. You can reserve them by phone, in person, or online. Passes include Buttonwood Park Zoo, Battleship Cove, Museum of Science, the Salem Witch Museum, Mystic Aquarium, the Hall at Patriot Place, and others. You can go to www.daytonlibrary.org for more information. There will be a celebration in honor of the D.R. Falcons winning the Division II Eastern Mass State Finals on Saturday, July 30, from noon to 5:00 p.m. It'll be held behind Town Hall at the Lions Pavilion. There will be a small parade followed by a cookout. All are invited. Help us celebrate this huge achievement. We will be forming a committee which will be asking area businesses for donations. If you would like to help out with the event or would like to donate, please call the Selectmen's office at 508-669-6431 and choose option one from the main menu. All donations will be accepted. And again, everyone's invited. The food, refreshments will all be for free, no charge. We're just looking to raise a little money to perhaps give some yearly small donations to a senior baseball player of Dayton Rehoboth that intends to, has been accepted to go to college, just a small scholarship. So all, we'll have a raffle at the end. All the prizes, 100 percent of the proceeds will go toward a small scholarship, and we'll continue to give that scholarship out as long as the money's last. Again, that's, circle your calendar, Saturday, July 30, from noontime to 5:00 p.m. The meetings for the Board of Selectmen and Board of Health are now being posted to YouTube under the name Town of Dayton Meetings. You may go to the town website and follow the link to Dayton's YouTube page, or you can go to YouTube and type in Town of Dayton Meetings. If you need further assistance, call the Board of Selectmen's office. Town Hall will be closed on Monday, July 4, in observance of Independence Day. And the Fifth Annual Re-reading of the Declaration of Independence will be held Monday, July 4, at 8:30 p.m. at the Dayton Community Church.
Thank you, Dean. I will just mention regarding the celebration for the D.R. baseball team. This is a joint celebration with the town of Rehoboth, and they have a committee working over there also. So we need people to volunteer to help out, and if anyone wishes to donate prizes or help sell raffle tickets, please let us know ahead of time. And we're going to schedule a meeting of volunteers. Is it, I think it's next Wednesday, next Wednesday night?
July 6, 6:30.
That meeting for volunteers to help with the celebration of the D.R. ball team will be next Wednesday, July 6, at 6:30 in this meeting room. Everybody is welcome. New business, review, discuss act, second reading of permit fee increases. At our last meeting, Kevin Bernato, our health inspector, was present, and he recommended that some changes be made to the fee schedule for various permits. He recommended, and this is the second reading, he recommended that food service permits, annual permits, be raised from $75 to $100. The massage parlor/spa line is being deleted because the town no longer licenses those. Those are done by the state. Retail store permits have been $100, and Mr. Bernato has recommended that that fee be reduced to $75 per year. And a new classification, non-residential pool permit, be established at $100. These would be for swimming pools at clubs or camps or something of that nature. This is not the pool you have in your backyard. So we will read this again, and then we will take action on it at a future meeting. If anyone has any questions, please get in touch with the Board of Health office. New business, review, discuss act on bids for town trash bags. We received, we solicited and received some quotations for someone to supply us with trash bags for the coming year. However, I'll ask you to look at these. I'm going to request that the board table action on these bids, these quotations, because there are, I'll just say there are problems with the method of solicitation, the process used to make sure each bidder's solicitation was private and confidential until this That's a summary of what came in. So I will request that a motion to reject all of these quotations and solicit new ones be made, and this will come up at a future meeting. We have an ample supply of bags, so if we don't act on this for a few weeks, it's, we are not going to run out of bags, so folks, don't worry about that.
So moved.
I have a motion.
I'll second that motion.
And a second. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Board of Health Organizational Committee. Would you like to report on that, since you're the newest member? We're going to appoint him tonight, I assume. I'll reappoint him.
Right, right. Those of you that were with us last week, we had Mr. Pires and Mr. Ron O'Connor in attendance to discuss going forth and going forward with setting up guidelines to have an appointed Board of Health separate from the Board of Selectmen. There's going to be a process which is going to involve some legislation, but in the meantime, there's plenty of work to be done to actually come up with the job descriptions of the personnel that we want to have on board for a, in order to have a conforming and pretty accurate Board of Health. These people will also research, because they are all former health inspectors or have been involved with the field of public health for years. Mr. Ron O'Connor statewide with the Department of Public Health. Mr. Tom Pires, you all know, has been a chairman of Board of Selectmen here in town for probably seven or eight or nine years he was here. Mr. Joe Cavalo, who is also the health inspector for the town of Somerset and Swansea, and Mr. Matt Tanis, who is the assistant health inspector for the town of Marshville, Massachusetts. These people are going to come in, they're going to, we thought they might be here tonight. I'm going to ask them to come up with job descriptions, backgrounds, qualifications of the people that should be running a Board of Health in this town, any degrees or certifications they might need, titles, and of course, job descriptions and their duties on a daily basis. So that's where we stand right now. We're going to put this group together, the four of them, like I said, all experienced people, and I think they'll set us in the right direction to start off.
I believe we appointed Tom Pires and Ron O'Connor at our last meeting, so I'll entertain a motion to appoint Matt Tanis and Joseph Cavalo to the Board of Health Organizational Committee.
So moved.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Just to outline what you said, the Board, the Board of Health Organizational Committee will develop qualifications, job description, slash duties. Was there anything else we wanted to put in there?
Any certifications, background?
Degrees.
Yep.
Well, that'll come under qualifications, but I'll list it. Certification, education, experience.
Experience, yeah.
Not experience, experience.
No, we've had enough experience with experience. So just for public information, this committee will be looking to develop qualifications. That will include certification, if any, their educational background, any experience they have in the field of public health. There will be job descriptions with more duties outlined, and I would just leave it at, their task will include but is not limited to what I just outlined, because as we move through this, they may find in talking to other Boards of Health, there are other things that need to be included, so we will give them some latitude to be able to include things that we made or listed here. Moving on, inspectors' reports. We have Mr. James Agia here, building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer. So welcome, Mr. Agia. If you'd like to come up, you can.
Sure. Good evening, Board. Good evening, Dayton. Hope everyone's well, enjoying the summer. Weather's been gorgeous, can't complain. So specifically, I'd like to talk about unsafe structures, unless there's something else that would be of pleasure. Specifically, 1721 Somerset Avenue. That's the latest on the list of dilapidated and abandoned structures. Hopefully, it's the last, although they seem to be, they seem to find me in ways that...
Mushrooms.
Yes.
That was 1721?
1721 Somerset Avenue is the last one of the list that I compiled several years ago of buildings that have gone into disrepair. It was further up on the list. It was slated for discussion last year, but the nightmare on Elm Street superseded. So I finally had a chance to survey Somerset Avenue with the survey team. That survey team did give me their findings, as I expected, unanimously recommended that it be demolished. A notification is made to the owner. The owner has been extremely cooperative. Spokesperson for the trust has informed me that they are willing to take the building down themselves. That means at no cost to the town. However, neither her nor the demolition contractor that she's confided in want to deal with the permitting process and all of the background that goes along with prepping the building for demolition. As the building official, it's my responsibility to make sure not only is the building demolished, but it's also done correctly. So this is going to be a hybrid effort by the town and the homeowner to get the building to a position that it can be demolished safely, legally, and then the homeowner, at least at this point, has given me in writing that they intend to hire the contractor, fully dependent of the town, to actually take the structure down. In doing so, after I received the letters from the survey team and moved forward with what's called the demolition process, I started to do the diligence required. The biggest one of that, of course, is whether or not the structure contains asbestos. So the asbestos company that we confide in did a survey, took several samples around the property, and I received a report today, and there is asbestos on the property. I'm a little surprised, both myself and the asbestos inspector, because it was found in a tile floor, and the tile floor does not meet the typical standards for asbestos-containing tiles. What I mean by that specifically is it's sort of an industry norm, and if you have a certain-sized tile, you're almost sure to find asbestos. These tiles didn't meet that size, so I was a little surprised that it contained asbestos. But nonetheless, that's why we do the testing. So I get to contact the property owner. I'm going to do that tomorrow. I'm quite certain she's going to instruct me to move forward as a town to clean the property up, which I will do so. And for those at home who may not be aware, as we've done in the past, any costs that occurred on the town side for our involvement in the demolition, we will be reimbursed or we will leave the property, and in some cases, we'll take the property through tax title. I would think that if this property owner is willing to pay the demolition contractor, she'll just wait for the bill that's generated from my office, and I'm sure she'll receive the money. Unfortunately, because we found asbestos, it's going to delay the demolition. Under emergency circumstances, I can receive appropriate waivers from the state, demo the building as such, and we get rid of the entire load that's being asbestos-contained. I don't think that's necessary here. The building has been sitting like that for a long time. It's not a place where a typical passerby would be impacted by it. The building's been secured, so I'm not concerned of anyone's safety. It's been marked appropriately for public safety officials, so everyone knows if there's an emergency there and not to go in. So we'll just let the process take its course, and it'll be down in several weeks.
Is there anything, because you found some asbestos, is there anything that would affect because of its proximity to the river, the water, that whole, and also to Route 138? It practically sits on the road.
That's a good question, and it's somewhat complicated, but it can be defined fairly easily. There are two types of asbestos, friable and non-friable. Friable asbestos is asbestos that can become airborne quite easily. Non-friable is just the opposite. So the asbestos in the tiles is non-friable, and it can be removed without causing any of the asbestos to be airborne. However, there are precautions that are put in place by the removal company that will ensure that none of the asbestos can become airborne and therefore enter the airstream or the water stream. So yes, there are standards in place that would take care of that, but the type of asbestos that was found is not like, for instance, the insulation wrap that you find on boilers. That's friable asbestos. As soon as you touch that, it dissipates. That asbestos would be a great concern, but that's not the case here.
This has probably been coated with wax, too, over the years, that will kind of hold it in place.
And whatever else is nearby.
Okay. Even without asbestos, just because of the river, I assume there was some special steps that have to be taken?
That's correct, and I've already done that. I've already met with the Conservation Commission. As cautionary measure, we went to what we call silt sock or hay bale. In this case, it's going to actually be a cylindrical hay bale that we wrap around the property, and we will not be using water to douse the house to keep the dust out of it. The state has... The state has parameters in place where we won't be obligated to water the building down because of the proximity to the river. In past cases, we've done that. Here, that's not going to happen, and what will happen is a portion of 138 will be closed down when demolition occurs. Traffic will only be allowed to go in one direction, and that's both for safety of the potential traffic, but also in cases of airborne debris. We don't want it to affect motors.
So there'll be a police detail, too, right?
Two, one more.
Oh, details, okay.
Be one lane, not, just one direction.
One, yeah, but one lane, but they're actually going to reroute traffic.
They are.
Yeah. At least my discussions with the police have been, they're going to reroute traffic. So whether you're heading north or south, there will be a detail in place. But Loops makes pretty short work of demoing buildings, so it won't be, it won't be an all day, a weekend affair. The other thing that we discussed is what, when this will happen, because that is a busy route for people going to and from work, this may be a Saturday demolition, so that'll all be worked out logistically.
Mr. Commissioner, how long does a demolition usually take?
I think you'd be surprised.
Minutes.
The actual demolition of the building that we put in a pile takes literally less than an hour in some cases. It's just the cleanup of the debris after that takes the time. So if they start at seven and we go by eight, can't design, you're not going to see a house anymore.
They happen over, and some of them have.
Yes, they did.
Happen to move.
And also, that same day, they will fill in the cellar hole?
Yes. When, when, when I write an RP, any revalese of a leep hay or someone else pays, it always includes rerouting the property so that there is no longer a hindrance or a hole or a public safety hazard, but also so that the watershed doesn't create any nuisances to the adjoining properties, the roadway, the river, et cetera, et cetera. So the silt sock will probably stay in place for some time until the meditation is reestablished.
Last week at the meeting, we read your letter concerning 800 Center Street. Can you give us an update on that?
Sure. First, I apologize for not being here that evening, but in my absence, I did write a letter, as you're aware. Since then, the only development has been, well, there's been significant development. There was handrails that were missing, needs of egressors at the property, and I was adamant that I would issue an exit order if that wasn't taken care of immediately. And it was a permit issued, and there is a contractor who was starting to construct those handrails, so that's being announced as we speak. The other thing is, I instructed the owners to solicit Rosalind Rossi, the Board Secretary, for names for which they could call for new septic inspection. As far as I know, they've obtained some names, but they have not hired a labor. So unfortunately, in my absence last week, I'm not privy to what was exactly discussed. Did the Board put any timeline on when they should submit a report to us?
No. The occupant trustee of the apartment over the garage was here, and she said that she and the owner, or other owner of the property, were willing to do whatever it takes to get it done. And she did mention something about the Title V. Again, we read the letter exactly as you wrote it and asked them to get in touch with you with, with information about what progress they've made. And so I think this is, and I did see a note that Roz had been contacted for Title V installers, so.
Okay. Perhaps if you're meeting next week, I can give an update, and if it seems to be lax in responding to the request, then maybe we should put a deadline on what reports the health should mail, or give an order to make it.
Okay.
A Ty-Tec can, can be a public safety hazard when it comes to the environment.
Okay.
So that would be my only suggestion.
The Board of Health isn't meeting, but I would say, mention to Karen to put you on the Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Okay.
And then if, if you have something, fine. If not, we can just skip it, all right?
Sure.
Or if there's something we need to do.
Sure. They were very cooperative, so I don't think we'll, we'll have an adversarial relationship because of the potential, and that's a, that's a contamination sensitive area, that entire region, so we, we want to stay on top of the Ty-Tec situation, if it indeed exists. We don't know it's there, that's why we need a Ty-Vac.
Okay. I had one question regarding the Ty-Vac property.
Yes.
And the question was, now that the lot is, the house, the building is gone, and there aren't campers and dogs and anything else on the property, the question was, from the, from the neighborhood, I guess is the best way to describe it, it's all turning into weeds and junk, meaning mother nature, and is there anything the town can do to require it to either be mowed or something?
There is. Because there are structures on the property and it's not a vacant property, the Board of Health does have regulations that Inspector Bernato is quite familiar with, that we've sent out in the past through this office.
Was it storage shed that was left?
Storage shed was left, right.
Okay.
I have no jurisdiction over demolition, so that's why it's still there. Just like the septic system. The septic system is a Title V compliant system. I have no jurisdiction to backfill that or abandon it. So with the Board's permission, if they came in and wanted to rebuild, if they re-inspected that system, it could be reused. So those two things still exist. So with that said, the Board of Health has full jurisdiction over the maintenance of a property, with especially power bridge for roads, vermin, et cetera, et cetera. So I would just reach out to Inspector Bernato. Rosalind Rossi may even have that information available through previous letters that have gone out. I think Rebecca Drive Neighborhood received letters like that in the past, and the homeowner is still responsible to do it. We can't step in. I think the regulation has enough teeth in it, but because there's no, there's no occupancy on that property, if the property owner does not comply, we have the authority to get it done and then lean the property. My suspect is that this December, our tax collective will be foreclosing all that property anyhow because of the outstanding means for demolition.
Okay. So because there is a septic system there, if in fact the town leans, no, takes possession of the property, at that point, would the town decommission that septic system?
That would be my recommendation.
And demolish whatever is there?
That would be my recommendation, yes.
Okay, all right.
I would also recommend that we demolish the remaining structure as well.
Okay.
The owner's there two, three times a week anyway. I don't know what he's doing, but...
I've been told that. I've not seen, I've seen vehicles there, the police have gone by, but nobody's seen him. I haven't seen him, so...
When this was posed to me, I, and did say, is there a dog tied up there again? And the answer was, no, he seems to come and go, but he doesn't do anything, and again, from a neighborhood concern, it's all turning into, you know, back to mother nature. It's weeds and it's whatever, and it's like, obviously, with some of the windy days we've had, and trash blows around, it gets in there. It's not going to go anywhere, so now you've got refuse.
And that's exactly why there's regulations for the Board of Health that can deal with that.
Okay.
So that's something we can take care of.
Okay, all right. So we'll, we'll get in touch with Kevin and see what he can do, and...
He's got the vacation that's due, so...
So we'll, we'll follow up on that.
Okay.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Agia? Okay, thanks for coming in.
Thank you, Dyton.
We are now at public input, and since the room is empty, does anybody on the Board have public input? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's unanimous. We are adjourned at 7:14. We'll see you in about 15 minutes for the Board of...